Thank you, and welcome to the Town of Dudley Planning Board for Wednesday, May tenth. Present this evening, we have Thomas Chinaki, Clerk of the Board, Richard Clark member, David Burden member, myself, Guy Moore, Chairman, and William Scanlon, our Acting Town Planner. Oh, hold on. Fifth member's here.
Mike Brothers.
Vice Chairman, you're here.
Lunch.
Thank you. Okay, first item for our agenda tonight would be Pledge of the Union.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Under new business, first item on the agenda, we have approval of minutes from April twenty-sixth meeting. Has everybody had a chance to take a look at the meeting minutes? I make a motion to approve the mini- meeting minutes of April twenty-sixth. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
So four yes, and Mr. Clark's gonna abstain because he was not in that meeting, yes. All right. We've got two copies to pass around. There's one copy coming this way. You got the other copy?
Second.
Thank you. All right, I should take care of the meeting minutes from last meeting. Second item on our agenda, A and R plans, Steve Watroba, Sawmill Road.
Yeah, sure. Good evening, everybody. I'm Steve Watroba, representing Sawmill Road LLC in regards to this A and R application. This is part of the larger development that we had talked about when I came in with the preliminary subdivision plan. This is the lot that has the required frontage to be classified as an A and R lot. So this is the first step, and as you are aware, I will be coming back with the definitive subdivision plan, hopefully in a couple of weeks.
Is there a checklist for this, Bill, someplace? There's a driveway coming in.
As, as we had discussed, the driveway's gonna come in on the, it's gonna be the new private road. The subdivision plan will show the location of the driveways on all the lots.
No road there now, though.
No, right, so it's gonna be a temporary easement.
And where's the sewage line gonna go? Monta Sawmill?
Yeah, the sewer line's gonna, sewer line is on Lawrence Road now, and it's gonna be brought across, across the road, and there'll be a manhole in the right-of-way, right in front of, about where that, I don't know what that notation means, but it says U.P. number, oh, that's utility pole number twenty-five, just to the left of that in that right-of-way. All of the sewer design and everything's gonna be included on the, the definitive subdivision plan.
So the sewage line is actually gonna connect to a used sewage pipe that doesn't exist yet. Is that what you told me?
Yeah.
If you have frontage on Sawmill, hook the driveway and everything to Sawmill like it should be, instead of...
Because the planning board at the last meeting, when we talked about the preliminary plan, actually suggested that it would be better not to have driveway, road, driveway. That it would be better to have those driveway, that it would be safer from a public safety standpoint to have the driveways for those two lots go on to the future of the new private road.
That was the recommendation of the town engineer, consulting town engineer.
Oh, okay, and I thought, I thought the planning board agreed with that. Okay, all right, so that's, that's why.
There's no road there now.
Right, doesn't ha-
If you get approval for the A and R plan, the driveway's gonna be-
The legal frontage for this A and R lot will be on Sawmill Road. There is no regulation that says that the driveway has to be on the frontage for that.
I'd like to ask North and Rowland, yeah, Matt, because I believe your frontage is where your driveway's supposed to go.
Fine, then I'll-
There used to be a bylaw into that effect, but it's no longer in effect.
Yeah, by state building codes, and I believe you can't have your driveway on a different road in frontage.
I don't believe that's a building code requirement.
No?
I don't think so.
It's a zoning-
It'd be a local zoning.
Zoning requirement.
Oh, and this is our checklist, and everything appears to be checked off, if my eyes are-
Well, there's two waivers, right?
Two W's.
I'm sorry?
There are two W's.
All right, my eyes are-
So we got a waiver for topography and a waiver for the contours on the driveway, is that what it is?
Correct.
Profile and the contours.
So you're not, you're not putting a driveway in on this anyways right now, regardless if it's off of the, the private way or off of Sawmill Road, you're just asking to get this lot as approved?
Correct.
If it wants to be approved, won't he be able to get a building permit for that and start building a house there?
Yeah, 'cause he has a frontage, but he has no sewage or utilities present.
He has to have, before you get a building permit, you have to have a water supply and all that.
Yeah, and a sewage supply, but he's not doing the sewage until it erodes.
So the building permit, the building inspector's not gonna give him a permit to build a house?
Yeah, so-
He just has an approved lot.
I'm the one taking the risk. If you approve this lot and I can't get a building permit, then I'm sunk, but that's my risk, that's my right to take that risk.
So the lot has a frontage required by zoning, and it has access on Sawmill Road, which I think is conforming a lot for A and R endorsement.
Right, it's basically for, we're, we're approving this as an A, buildable lot, basically.
Yeah, with the frontage on Sawmill, nothing else.
Right.
But the frontage is out of-
That means the zoning.
Yes, frontage is actually up here on Sawmill.
All right, so we would have to vote on the two waivers, so the one for the contours of the topography and the one for the contour of the driveway. Things which we've waived in the past for other-
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, seeing that this is basically a flat lot, flat area, I make a motion to be accepted, two waivers, one for the topography and the other one for the driveway profile.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Was it unanimous?
Yeah.
Okay. And would somebody like to make a motion for the A and R plan?
Mr. Chairman, I would propose that we approve the A and R plan as presented.
Yeah, we have a motion to approve the A and R plan for Sawmill Road LLC, map one thirteen, lot sixty-five. All in favor?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
All right.
Three paper.
Three paper. Oh.
You wanna sign this?
Well, we got two more to value, and we have two to value.
Yes.
Yeah, but I, I wrote may, so I'll sign it. I said may.
Oh, I thought we were, I thought it was in hand, I missed it, but now, four to one. Four to one, okay, all right.
Okay.
You're right.
That's me, yeah. Need three?
That's two.
Yeah. All right. Mm-hmm. You would need, I have to cross out one, not here.
Close everything.
Okay. I got demerit.
Huh?
I got demerit today.
What?
I got stopped at school, I was two minutes late.
No worries. Okay. Number three on our agenda for this evening, seven fifteen-
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
Was that not a unanimous vote?
Four to one.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't-
Okay. But I think everything, I think everything's signed for you, Steve.
Great, thank you very much.
Yep. Number three, seven fifteen, we're not there yet, but this is just a continuation, Bill?
Yes. As you know, we may still in discussions-
In Sewer Department? So do we need to read a statement or something, or just announce that we're continuation? Okay, all right.
Well, we do like to kind of, how many continuations do, are we allowed to give? Can this go on indefinitely?
Yes.
They're, they're asking for it, we're not-
So the, the Water Commission asked for, even, for the Apple, to hire a, to do analysis of the water reserve systems, and that has continued, and the Water Commission has had a chance to review it. So, I hope that I have a next meeting, so I'll see what other questions they have.
And that, if there are open items they have to address, if they have to go back to engineering, because theoretically, we'll look at this in three or four months, I mean, it just seems to me at some point in time, if this is going to be in the design development phase, that we should just close it and have it reopen whenever they're ready. I just, my opinion, I'm not sure if that's the protocol, but-
Well, in order to close it, you have to have the hearing. You have to open hearing and then discuss it and close it.
Right, because the last time we had it, we, we, we had a continuation until the good straight-
So if we continue to the next meeting, you can have that discussion and decide whether to continue the hearing again if necessary, or to close the hearing and, and take action.
Understood, thank you, Bill.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so going to the standard business, discussion, status reports on finishing construction of and acceptance of uncompleted, unaccepted subdivision streets, including Pierpont Estates, Rocky Hill Estates, Country View Estates, Tobin Farm Estates, and Lion Estates. Do we have any updates on those, Bill?
On Pierpont Estates, I mentioned at a previous meeting that the applicant wanted to have all security in cash with the town treasurer.
Right.
So we've closed one of those securities, it was a letter of credit for about $2,900, so we got that in cash. So we've canceled that letter of credit. So there were two more with Hill Financial that we haven't gotten the money for yet, but eventually, when that money does come in, we can cancel those securities. And the thought is to put all of the security into one account for Pierpont, rather than have five separate accounts, one for each of the phases. So that's being worked on by the town treasurer and the town accountant.
One of the questions that we had at the last meeting, if I remember right, was Mr. Ednison was, was questioning whether the, the estimates that were done by Graves were, were accurate in the, in the way that, you know, based on square footage, or, like, he was figuring square footage or square yards, and I think Graves was figuring paving by the ton or something like that. And we were gonna, we were gonna see if we could get Jeff Walsh to come in and explain this to us, is-
I can ask him to do that, I haven't done that yet, but if he likes, I can-
Yeah, I mean, like, if, if we don't have a, you know, at the next meeting or whenever.
I took a ride up there, that place looks great. I don't see a problem with Graves' engineering estimation at all. I'm just wondering how, that half of that hasn't been approved yet, 'cause you got all those little side roads over there, and that looked great.
It went to town, it went to town meeting, and the, the board of selectmen asked, asked for it to be passed over.
It's shame fair to taxpayers, 'cause I drove up there, and I'm like, this place is really nice. The asphalt, the sidewalks, everything, I think there's a couple of street signs, stop signs, I'm missing.
Yeah, so just real quick, I, I don't really have a problem per se with the estimate, I'm just not understanding the background of the estimate.
Yeah.
And we don't, I personally don't need the engineering team to come in here and explain, if they just wanna send a quick email up, hey, this is what we figured, or how we figured it, I mean, it should be a, a pretty quick thing, it just, I, I just miss in the background, so I miss it.
Looking for some clarification, huh?
Yeah, there's like, probably six hundred feet of road, I just saw this binder code, everything else is pretty much done up there.
You should be selling real estate, that was quite an endorsement, for this.
So, I mean, I think most of the, most of the lots-
The applicant has to request that the street be accepted.
Okay.
And then when that happens, Graves and the Highway Superintendent will go out and identify punch list of items that need to be done to complete the road. Then when that's done, you know, the, we go through the street acceptance process. And whatever money's left over in the escrow accounts can be returned to the applicant.
I mean, my guess is he's probably gonna try to have it all accepted at once, not, not piecemeal, 'cause he's, he's tried it piecemeal, and they, it's been rejected.
Yeah, I don't know why, why would you, you reject that?
I mean, that's the goal. Heavy machinery driving up on that new road.
Yeah, well, heavy machinery drives on every road.
Okay, I mean, the applicant, Tony, is, you know, has been doing this since two thousand and six.
Yeah.
So he's ready to, to finish it as soon as possible.
Yeah, he only has a whole bunch of money.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Eisenhower Drive, is, what is the situation with their status quo, another new change?
Yeah, I, I've, I've reached out a couple of times, and emails, phone calls, and I could try a phone call again, I mean, it's getting, it's getting more, more in springtime, so maybe the applicant is back in Massachusetts and not in Florida, so-
All right.
I could try, I could try another phone call and see if I can catch him.
Be nice to get that one off the list soon.
I don't think we'll be able to make the spring town meeting, 'cause that's coming up soon, but maybe the fall.
Thank you.
I can talk to him. And did I see something in here about completion, extension request for Country Club at Acres?
Yes, that's in tab C.
Okay.
So, this, um, we had extended this to May of this year, so he's asking for an extension to twelve thirty-one. Which I think indicates to me that he intends to get it completed, you know, in a shorter period of time than the one year that he would normally ask for. So I think, you know, he's planning on wrapping it up soon.
Sorry, which tab is that, please?
C.
B?
C.
And then the, the one behind that is for... I can't read the writing, DMA Holdings?
No, are you in tab C?
Yeah, no, there's another paper behind the one for Country Club Estates, but I can't really read it, I just see DMA Holdings.
So the, well, the one that- We just acted on it, the seven fifteen time slot. It was the second one, Thirty Organic LLC DMA Holdings, is that the one you're looking at?
Yeah, what's, what's this one about?
So that was for the Chase Ave.
Oh, that's the one that-
Continuation.
That's the continuation, okay, I get it.
The page before that is the one we're at, we're on.
Yeah, yeah.
Country Club Estate, Country Club-
Acres.
Right, all right, actually, I have that app.
So do we need a, do we need a vote to, to, to extend this till the end of the year for Country Club Acres?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I know I have to recuse myself as far as any vote is concerned, as it were, but I did take some pictures of that particular area this morning, or this afternoon, rather.
You're on screen?
And I noted in the video that Mr. Ednison had been congratulating the folks on Mason Road and having cleaned things up. I don't think that's exactly the case, I don't think that's the case at all with regards to Country Club. There is, as you mentioned in that meeting, last meeting, that open area.
Is it still there?
And they've, they've, well, hopefully the pictures will be able to-
Yeah, it's up on screen.
Okay.
No, it's not, though.
Oh, yeah.
Isn't that the...
Just, there's nothing up the screen.
There's nothing here.
Oh, there's nothing here? Oh, there's still lots, I'm sorry. Lost it, there you go.
So they have put some things there.
Okay.
My own simple-minded view of this is, this is just enough to attract a kid's attention. And consequences, as you've noted in the last meeting, there is water there, and if you look at that water, it's not any Poland Springs that you're looking at here. It looks like it's pretty dirty stuff, so at worst, you have a youngster going home dirty. And the silt barriers, well, you can pretty much forget about those. They are, as you can see above, they're there, then they're not there. And as you can see in the picture below, wherever they were, things have just moved-
Over.
Over.
Yeah.
And I think we brought this up before, I believe a letter had gone to them to do something about this. I see no indication that anything has happened. The only difference is they've got that large pit, it wasn't there previously. But the barriers are pretty much nonexistent.
The Highway Superintendent did go out and talk to the contractor, and he promised he would, you know, put a manhole cover there and, and take care of that.
When does, when does his current approval, his current approval expires the end of May? So we have another meeting before, before it expires?
The twenty-second, that's all.
Twenty-fourth.
Well, it's, well, it's in town meeting?
It's the twenty-second.
Twenty-second, right.
That's not really a business meeting, twenty-fourth is the regular.
We're a regular meeting, okay.
We can't do anything on the twenty-second? Like, we can't, we couldn't make a motion like that on the twenty-second, no?
No, it's, it's a meeting, we're just with the board to talk about the town meeting articles, we're in the auditorium of Shepherd Hill High School.
Well, maybe if we, I was just thinking if, you know, not like we're holding them hostage, but I wouldn't really wanna approve an extension on this if they're not gonna clean the place up, I mean-
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would have absolutely no intention of approving this if they're not gonna clean things up, they've been ignoring this for I don't know how long. I have absolutely no qualms with holding them hostage.
I think-
He can come in here at the next, might, to be for to speak in our tone, but he can clear everything up, he's got two weeks until our next meeting. If it's not cleared up and squared away, his extension, as far as I'm concerned, is gone.
Okay, I, I would, I think we should-
So we move this extension to the next meeting?
Yeah, that's, that would be my preference, I think we need to, and we need to send him a, a letter, Bill, to let him know that that's, you know, we expect to see some action there. You know, I mean, the, the real, the real thing that's got me concerned is, you know, there's people living there now.
Yes.
And if they've got grandkids or something coming to visit.
And they are people of a certain age, where the grandkid's gonna be a good deal faster, I suspect.
Right, so I, I just think that that's, you know, a, a problem waiting to happen. I, I was totally shocked to see that there, but-
Common sense.
Yeah, I mean, and, and it looks like the problem is, is that there's no, where that hole is, there's a catch, obviously a catch base underneath the hole, and then the, the frame where the, where the grate is supposed to sit is gone, it's been ripped out, so they need to put a new frame in, so they can put a grate back on that, otherwise-
Well, not that I want to invoke deity here, but that's why God created steel plates-
Right.
For exactly something like this.
Yeah.
It's an easy solution.
Yeah. So, okay. All right. Through the chair, when did Jeff go out there and talk to me? Was it like, right after our meeting last time?
Yes.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I believe there was reference in the last meeting to the visit by Graves Engineering. And I think if I'm not mistaken, that was the five-minute. And if you've got, we've got better than twenty residences there right now, either occupied or about to be occupied. And if you divide twenty, if, just take twenty as a number, divide that into three hundred seconds, that that five minutes represented, it gets you one, nothing, actually, you know, I really, I, I, I know we have a question open, and it regards to Graves and how they've estimated something, but I still can't get over the fact that somebody would indicate a five-minute visit, because you can't see anything in five minutes. I mean, there's been a lot of work on that, it's that site, and five minutes is highly appropriate.
Okay. All right, so we have a plan going forward for that. Okay, so that was, anything on SEP Solar, Oxford Ave, J and, J D and D Oxford Ave, or Stevens Mill?
No.
Okay. Have we gotten anything from our, from Nichols College?
I checked the registry today and still has not transferred.
Transferred, okay. We went over the town meeting articles at the last meeting?
So I have the reports to town meeting on those articles.
Okay.
And we need to discuss how you wanna present them this year.
They're not in our books.
Tab, tab D. Yes. So, when the articles come up on the town meeting floor, the auditorium will ask for the planning board to make a motion to submit their advisory recommendation to town meeting. So this is the report of the planning board on each of the five articles. Typically, the chair will stand up and read this report to the, to the meeting. And then questions might come up from the board, et cetera, et cetera, and then the vote's taken, and you go on to the next article. So if anybody has any comments on, of this text, let me know, and I'll, I can revise it before the town meeting.
Right now, you said the town meeting is scheduled for the twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
That's a Monday night?
Yes.
Okay.
So there are four that the planning board voted in favor of, and the fifth one-
Was the citizens petition.
Right, if you just wanna go to the fifth page, it's noted that the board voted two in favor and two opposed, therefore, the planning board does not have a recommendation on opposed amendment.
I think we need a T there, Bill.
Where's that?
Does not have.
Ah, thank you.
I would hope that Mr. Watroba would be in attendance at the town meeting, he spoke so eloquently in regards to the shared driveway. I think we need a reprise as far as that goes.
Mr. Chairman, I can go through these tonight if you want, or you can just read them and email, email me with any comments that you may have.
It's the board's pleasure, you wanna read them on our own and get back to Bill, or?
Works for me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I just read them briefly, and they, they look okay to me. Okay, I just read them briefly and they, they look okay to me. I mean, I think it's.
As you, in terms of how you want it for something, do you want the chair to do, do them all? Or do you wanna each take one and, and get up to the mic and do it? Or how would you like to handle it?
I'm like, I'm ordering them all.
I can, I can do it. It's not a problem.
We have confidence in our chairman.
All right, thank you. Well, hopefully we'll have better luck this time, but I mean, it is still a two-thirds majority vote, so we don't have to just get the simple majority.
Oh.
I don't know if you're aware, but there was a change to the zoning act that allows some zoning amendments to be done by simple majority. It was primarily geared to, towards housing, identity housing kinds of.
Like what we, like what we had that came up with Stevens Mill. There was, there was one vote there that came up that only had to be a simple majority, yes.
Fortunately, that doesn't apply in any.
No, not in this.
No. Okay, so that takes care of those. What else do we have for this evening? Planner's plate is up next.
I just wanted to figure out today on the Complete Streets program, since you're the Complete Streets Committee. NEST AOT made a change to their guidance. Now, they only allow communities to apply once every four fiscal years. But they've increased the amount from 400,000 to 500,000. So we've applied for and received the 400,000 for Mason Road in FY '21, I think. So we're not eligible until FY '25 to reapply again, which would be the fall of 2024. We could theoretically apply for 100,000 since we got the 400,000 and then we can go up to 500. But there's not much you can do with 100,000 on this, so I think we should wait until we can apply for the full amount.
I would, I would agree. And I mean, I don't think we should be looking like we're trying to get every, every penny that's, you know, coming to us either. I mean, I think we were very lucky that we got the $400,000 on our first application, so, you know.
Just a casual observation, I've heard no one complain about the sidewalks on Mason Road and actually they look a lot better than I had envisioned them.
Yeah, and I, I've, I've driven up and down Mason Road numerous times and seen a lot of people walking on them. And I was, I was really surprised that it's, you know, being accepted as well as it is. So I think.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, to bring us back to, and I think to thank Mr. Wetrone for having mentioned it at the last meeting. The thought was, as I, as I recall, that we would address the issue at Ramsworn Road. And I'm not sure how close anybody necessarily is to that situation, but I know on numerous occasions, I've seen students from Shepherd Hill, usually it's the track theme or perhaps cross country in season, running around that corner. There's no sidewalk. There's stop signs, obviously, but I think in, for the minds of many people, I think unfortunately, stop signs are something optional. Those kids coming around that corner, I think honestly, we've been living in borrowed time. And I know it was mentioned of, well, we have the historic cemetery there, but in where Dudley just, Dudley Hill is historic district, I believe is the terminology. I think one of the greatest ISOs in town is those two orange emitting Jersey barriers sitting in front of that cemetery, as they have been for years now. If we could somehow take care of that corner and extend with maybe $500,000, maybe not, but do something with that, because it seems a shame to have those signs up there. Welcome to the, to the historic district. And then look at those things staring in the face.
Yeah, and I think.
It's not only a safety factor. I think it's an aesthetics as well, quality of life.
I think part of the project for putting sidewalk in that area is to remove the sidewalk that's in front of the cemetery now and fix that stone wall or retaining wall, whatever you wanna call it. And then put the sidewalk on the opposite side of the street so that you're not interfering with the cemetery at all.
Some years ago, when they first removed, and I don't know who took authority or authorization to do it, they removed trees that were there. And there was a big ruh-rah, if you might recall, in terms of that. And then subsequent to that, I do recall that at least one selectman's meeting mentioned that funds were being sought. And I think some, I believe Michelle's name was put in there somewhere in terms of funds having been identified to do something with that nonexistent sidewalk. And I don't know what happened to that. I think shortly after that, we ran into the COVID situation and that just fed back, burned it.
Well, we, she did apply for funding from the Janet Mouser Trust.
Okay.
And we got 5,000.
All right.
And we used that to hire a surveyor to do a survey of the cemetery.
Okay.
So that's kind of a base plan. It's one of the initial steps to, you know, to do anything there. So we do have that information.
All right, so we only need 4, 95,000 dollars. Good to know.
Anything else, Bill?
That's it.
That's it? Any comments from the planning board?
Mr. Chairman, I was paying attention to the Water and Sewer Commission. And I think the applicants from Jesse Road, they got the extension from us a couple of meetings ago. They were in front of them, if I understand.
Yes.
I didn't pay close attention to the whole entire meeting. I only saw bits and pieces. I was trying to, well, I'm not gonna take. Anyway, it seems there's some issues about the sewer going from there, the direction, and there has to be some kind of peer review of the entire thing.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't understand all the details of it, but they were trying to kick it back to the planning board because the Water and Sewer Commission doesn't have any kind of a peer review. Is that something that we can act on right now? Or do we need to talk to them first? Or it just seems that, to me, and again, I didn't see the whole thing, so excuse me if I'm getting all the facts wrong. The Jesse Road people came, for the subdivision, came in front of us and we gave approval for an extension. But that obviously has to be linked to getting approval of all the other departments. Otherwise, there's no power to our approval. And since one of the departments is having an issue, it seems that it should kind of be getting kicked back to us for some kind of action. In my, the way I'm thinking about it, I mean, am I confused?
So the planning board, you know, as you know, approved the subdivision.
Yep.
And then we've granted extensions. So they're entitled to build a plan that the planning board approved. They received permit from the Water and Sewer Commission, but that expired. I think it has a three-year time span. So that opens up the permit process at that level for the water and sewer connections. However, the planning board process is completed, so we don't have the ability to, to, you know, since we've approved it and extended the approval, we don't have a process in place to, to do another peer review for something that's already hasn't approved. So, so is this something that, for the future, before we, before we extend any more subdivision approvals, that we go back to the Water and Sewer and get their input before we extend it? Because.
Well, the, you've given a year for the applicant. And I think it's up to him to continue to work on getting all the permits that he needs to, to make that subdivision happen. And one of those, of course, is the sewer permit.
Okay.
So he's gotta work with the sewer department to come up with a plan to satisfy whatever issues are there.
And if he can't get that, then it doesn't matter if we approved it or not, because he's not gonna be able to build anything.
Right. So I think he will have to do some kind of, find some kind of a study to identify what the concern is and what the solution might be.
So is the, the trigger for this, that his sewer permit expired? Or that some kind of a guideline, regulation, code changed that makes his old engineering no longer?
I believe the permit was good for three years and then expired.
It expires? They let it expire?
Yes.
It was basically on them, then they let it expire?
Yes.
I just did.
Procedures that we should do? Like, does, should it go to water and sewage first and then come to the planning board? I think that's.
It might make more sense that if, if the next time we have somebody coming in, another applicant coming in, asking for an extension, that they, they go to the other boards and get sign off from the other boards first before we take action, so that we there, we're not stepping on anybody's toes. Because if we knew this, we probably wouldn't have proved it, right?
Send them right to sewage and water first.
If we knew they didn't have water and sewer permits, we probably would've said, you know, go get your water and sewer permits and then come back and see us.
Good point.
That took a point.
Okay.
Yeah. However, if, if you didn't grant the extension, his plan would have expired. Say, would have to reapply to the planning board for a subdivision approval again.
Right, but he could've used the same plan.
Right.
So he wouldn't have to re-engineer or anything. He could've, he could've tried coming back with the same plan unless something changed in the, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts by laws.
It would've been expedited, but still, it's a step he'd have to go through.
Right. And, and is there a fee involved and all that? So.
So that would enable you to do another peer review.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, are we still, comments from the planning board?
Yep.
I did note in the video, in reference was made to the, I think it's Hall Road Marijuana Distribution Center or Retail Outlet. I wonder, now, that is a state highway at that point.
197 is Hall Road.
197, it's a state highway.
But it's not on 197.
No, it's not on 197. But it's so darn close, you're really not gonna know the difference. I do recall in some time ago in meetings, a gentleman had property on West Main and was proposing, or looking to the possibility of having Amazon vans stored there. And there was so much concern among the members of the planning board as far as the traffic, that that would result. That did not come to fruition. That has not happened, at least not to date anyway. And I don't know whether he's still pursuing that in the background. But I think we need a traffic study there. I mean, that intersection is a little ridiculous to begin with. We've had additional housing the other side of the road and back of the courthouse. There's traffic coming from four different directions. There's nothing there but a bunch of stop signs. And I think if I recall correctly, the prior police chief had noted that that road, 197, were a series of very serious accidents not that long ago on that road. There needs to be something there, I suspect, in terms of either directing that traffic or controlling that traffic, keeping it out of that intersection to the extent that we might be able to do so. I don't know how successful this business is gonna be, but if it's another, if it's the marijuana version of Dippin' Donuts, we could be sitting on a powder keg.
You have the authority to acquire a.
Task for that? Okay, so, but they, they haven't come in yet.
No, I've, you know, I've talked to the applicant. He's working on it. I thought it would've come in by now, but it obviously hasn't yet, so.
I mean, is it, is it, so it's a safe plane review?
Special permit.
Special permit, so.
Marijuana establishment.
Right, but there's, are they gonna use an existing building? Cause I mean, it's just like a shed and a garage there.
I don't think that building would, that.
Yeah, I don't think they're gonna reuse that building.
So they're gonna build a new building?
I believe so.
Okay, okay. All right. And then they gotta have enough parking for whatever number, number of patrons that they would have.
And employees.
Right.
Any security measures around that?
Security, yeah.
Right.
Would, we would have access, I believe, based on the one that's at Chase Ave. Wouldn't we have access to, we know how much money they made in the course of a year. Wouldn't we have access to know like what's, what's the daily visits to that establishment? Right now on Chase Ave, we would know, we could, we could probably get a very good number on like how many, how many cars per day are going down to that, to that establishment. And that would give us some idea of how much added traffic you would see.
I don't know the marijuana business well enough to know that that would be a good indication. This one has some advantages, I suspect, in that it's not that far from Connecticut. And, you know, with the Hill Street or whatever, Brandon Road Bridge out, this one may have some easier access, if you will, or people may conceive of it as easier access.
And it's not, it's not with an eye view of the courthouse either.
Oh, there is a convenience there, Mr. Chairman. I'm not quite sure how that works together. And I might add, there are, I believe, three attorneys in the, in the building just across the road. So there's nice symmetry there. There's certainly, could take care of many things.
I think Connecticut's opening up dispensaries now too, right?
Yeah, they are. And I think Rhode Island just approved that you can advertise now in a lot of facilities. So the whole business is changing. And I think we've seen an example of that with the Chase Road folks, because their business plan is definitely not what it was initially.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not just finding gold on the ground as it was at one time.
Any more comments from the planning board? Okay, and any comments from the audience? Okay, next meeting date is May 24th.
That should be May 22nd.
22nd, yeah, I was gonna say. Little typo there. 22nd at 6:30 in the cafeteria of Shepherd Hill High School. And it's gonna be just to discuss the proposed zoning articles. So we've already voted on those and you have the, you have the proposed wording that we're gonna review. So at that pre-meeting to the town meeting, we really don't have anything to vote on.
No.
Unless there's something that changes.
As you know, Town Council is there. He usually comes over and asks the board if, you know, we have any questions or anything. So it's an advantage, opportunity to take advantage of that.
Okay.
Through any, any other business, you know, between town meeting, you can.
Something that needs to be changed on the floor, something we'll discuss it, yeah. Okay. And then the regular, the next regular meeting would be May 24th at 7:00 PM in this room. And then we have approvals of consultant vouchers or payment of bills. Do we have some bills?
We have one, the legal one from the Stonebridge Press.
Okay.
$161.70.
Is there a copy of it in our book?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Would somebody like to make a motion that we allow Bill to pay the $161.70 to Stonebridge Press?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we allow the town planners to pay the amount of $161.70 to Stonebridge Press.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay, take care of that, Bill. And no other town notices or correspondence? Bill, nothing? Okay. Somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Somebody want a second? Sorry.
I'll second.
I'm rushing the votes. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.